So, welcome everybody. Charlie, are you going to be doing my?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Okay, great. So, first thing I want to do is waive the reading of the minutes from the last meeting with April 13.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the meeting as a minutes from April 13.
Second, hold on a favor. Aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. First case of business is, Mr. Duca, tell us something about an old case that we had back in, I don't know, January. So, Mr. Duca, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jay Duca, Director of Spectacular Services. I have here for the board, it's a letter from City Solicitor Jim Timmons in regards to the case that you heard prior back in, what's the date of that? This is the case of Louis Restaurant, 1260, 1266 C Street.
Across the street from Louis.
Across the street from Louis Restaurant. Yes. The problem arose that there was a question of the rightful owner and the owner of the property. The solicitor wrote this letter and basically says, Jim Timmons says, that he did a review of the title and his review of the title revealed a scrivener's error in the zoning board of a ill decision. Specifically, the named owner of the property is incorrectly identified. So, the owner of the property was incorrectly identified on the documents in the prior case. He goes on to say that he's attached a copy of the 2011 deed that indicates the title to be, the title to be in the name of C Street Quincy LLC. The owner in the decision, however, is identified as 1269 C Street LLC. It bears a close resemblance to the prior owner, 1269 C Street Realty Trust. And this may explain what the confusion was. Jim Timmons goes on to say that each time the matter was considered and decided, however, I have confirmed that the C Street Quincy LLC was the owner of the property. The relief that was granted runs with the land and the name of the owner is not a material factor in relation to the grant of relief. And he's asking that the board may consider that this is a scrivener's error and resolve it upon a vote of this board by way of a motion slash vote to correct the clerical error, followed by the issuance of an amended decision with the correct owner's name. Otping caring is required. Jim Timmons goes on to, therefore, he asks that you consider this at your next meeting under Old Business and he be available if necessary to answer any questions. So, basically, the name on the original decision that you guys voted on has the incorrect name, the scrivener's area according to Jim Timmons. He's reviewed the case and the correct name is going to be C Street Quincy LLC. Should have been the name on the decision. So, that's the issue before this board and the solicitor asked that you vote to amend the prior decision with the correct owner's name.
Okay. So, with that, I guess we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend this. Can I get the case number, Jay? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's case number 20-69 and 20-70. It would actually two cases with the same name.
I'd like to amend the vote of case number 20-69 and 20-70 to resolve a scrivener's error and to correct the area we should, the name of the parties of the ownership should be C Street LLC.
C Street Quincy LLC.
I'm sorry, C Street Quincy.
LLC. That's the correct one, yep.
Okay, C Street Quincy LLC.
Got a second?
Second. Second.
Are the motions seen and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Duca.
Mr. Chairman, now, one more matter. The applicant for 20, is it 20?
2117?
It's 15 Jewett.
The applicant for 15 Jewett Street has asked for a continuance. Madam Clerk says that the next available date is June 8th via consideration.
Sure, if we can have a motion, Charlie.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number ZBA 21-17, Bon Chabreeze, for a variance finding to construct a two-family home in the lot using a floatproof foundation and driveway pavers on the premises number 15 Jewett Street, I make a motion to continue this until June 8th.
Second.
Are the motions seen and all in favor?
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Back to Old Business, ZBA 21-4, Bing Zhang Zhang, for a finding to remove existing front railings and replace them with enclosed windows, porch, center, on the premises number 183 Marlborough Street. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes, my name is Bing Zhang. I represent RV Group and I am representing the client, Shuang Lee.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about last time, guys.
Happens. So, tell us what you want to do.
Existing is just the regular railings, wooden railings with the roof overhang. The client wants to take the wooden railings off and put a new walls up with windows and use that as a three-seating room. And then, I believe I would have to, well, the contractor will have to extend the steps out to make a landing for the door. So, it'll be an enclosed porch, I would say.
Yeah.
Other than that, yeah, I think that's it. No heating, no AC, just enclosing the space up.
No electricals be out there?
No, I think they have an outdoor one right now.
Okay.
Yep.
So, no more than one? It's already there?
Yes, exactly. Nothing else. No plumbing.
Okay. Does any members of, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna add that there is the existing light on the porch, but that was it.
Okay.
Yeah, so no electrical or plumbing is gonna be done. No new electrical or plumbing is gonna be done.
Does any of the board members have any questions for the applicant?
I'd like to know how far the stairs are coming out towards the sidewalk?
The landing, right now, I believe it's 12 foot seven from the, from the existing porch. If I add three feet, it'll be nine foot seven, I believe.
To the bottom, to the land, to the bottom landing of the stairs?
The bottom landing, I believe it'll be total, in total, it'll be adding three feet. So, let me see. Will roughly be about four feet, five feet, the very first riser to the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, this is time.
Anybody like to speak in favor of this? Anyone like to speak in favor?
Yeah, the citizen Rutherford with his hand.
Okay, citizen Rutherford. See there?
There I am. I had the whale of death from the Mac, if anyone knows what I'm talking about. It was just going around.
Can you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, that about the truth, John?
I do, I do. I was just, a quick question I got is this. I was just looking at the picture. It looks like as you come up to the top step, if they're gonna enclose that, they might have to rebuild the steps to make a better landing area to get into the house. Because if you're enclosed, I can't really tell. It looks a little, I mean, it's a really big porch that they're going to enclose. So, I just want to make sure you address that you can safely get into the house. Because before, the whole porch was the landing area when you walked up to the house. So, you would walk up to that top step and then you'd be in that, in the front porch onto the landing area. So, if you look, I can't really tell from the, what the top picture looks like. I wasn't there at the house. But, other than that, people pay a lot of money for property taxes in Quincy and I want people to be able to utilize their properties. So, it will look similar to the property that's on the right. Their house pretty much comes out about the same distance. So, I'm in favor of this. I just want to make sure that they can safely get into the front stairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Once, twice, last call, all that party hearing over. Anybody, any correspondence? Maureen. Okay, I'll take that as a no.
Second. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
There's a letter from the Department of Public Works with no comments.
Thank you. Anybody opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Once, two, last call, opposed or undecided? All that part of the hearing over. Well, gentlemen, as you all know, that I'm not a big fan of enclosing porches, but it doesn't seem like a real big deal here. It's the other house of the neighborhood team that have done that. Charlie, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm feeling the same. It kind of matches the neighborhood. It's not the only one. So, I would, I would accept that.
Brian, nod your head. Yes or no?
Sorry, yeah. No, I can, I'm good.
Okay, all right. John Himmel?
I'm fine with it. It fits the neighborhood.
And Mr. Chin?
Yes, it looks fine to me. I'm in favor.
All right. Charlie, if you have a motion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 20-56, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one.
21-4.
Give me a minute, yeah. Regarding case number 21-4, I make a motion to grant the requested variance submitted by Mr. Zhang, Jim Zhang.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
The motion seen and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got it, Mr.? Thank you very much. Moving on to case number 20-56, Kristen Dwyer for a variance to construct a storage shed on the premises number 37 Braintree Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative here? 37 Braintree Avenue.
Go ahead and unmute yourself if you can.
Sorry. It's connecting to Bray, over there.
Hi, can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. My name is Greg Noel. I represent Kristen and our property at 37 Braintree Avenue.
Okay, so what you guys want to do there?
So, we're looking to build a 10 by 14 shed on our property, at least one foot from the right side of the property line to use for garden material, storage tools for our yard and also anything that our children want to put in the shed, really.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have gravel put underneath the shed and the shed will be built by an insured company, say a Reed's Ferry Sheds or Chapin Sheds. We've gone over this with our neighbors and they're okay with this. We just wanted to get approval from the city.
You can't move this any farther, any closer to your house?
So, if we did, that would be in the middle of our property, in the middle of the, in the lawn where our children play and it would not be the optimal spot if it were over six feet away from the side yard setback. So, we're moving a little closer.
Even if it wasn't six feet, could it be two feet or three feet?
Yeah, two or three feet would be fine. We were hoping to get it as close to the new fence that we put up. But, yeah.
All right. Anything else you want to add?
Well, that's everything, really.
All right, good. Any questions from the board?
I have a question, I have a question for Mr., I have a question for Mr. Duca. Jay, do we, do we usually recommend that they be more than a foot off of the, off of the line, the shed, so that they can get in behind it? Or is wherever they place it, is that fine?
Wherever they place it, it's fine. I'm actually looking to change the ordinance next September so that small, smaller properties anyway, that you don't even get permits for sheds that are less than 200 square feet. But, I'd get to have some room, I could remove debris and maintain the shed. But, it's, I don't have a, I don't have a permit either way, Charlie.
Okay. All right. That's it. I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Chin, any questions?
I, I do. I'm looking at the map that was attached to the application and I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right property. There's a little box with an arrow in the middle of the page with a little drawing of a, of a square there. Is that the proposed shed?
Yeah, I was trying to illustrate where the shed would be placed on our property. So.
In relation to the shed, which, which is the main house? This is the.
It would be on the left side of the property.
Okay. It seems to me that there's a pretty good size of yard back there and a 10 by 14 shed is a pretty big shed. And to ask for one foot from the property line, that doesn't give you much allowance for things like painting and maintenance.
Well, we do see a lot of sheds in our neighborhood that are, you know, a similar distance or even shorter from the property line.
But you're, you're here looking for, for a variance for your particular application as opposed to what other people have done in their yards?
Yep. We would have siding on the shed and I really don't think there'd be much maintenance that would need to be done.
Anything else for us?
Not that I'm satisfied, but I'll, I'll go on to that and we'll let the next person speak.
Mr. Himmel?
I'd like to see it minimal two feet. There's a, Greg, you have a fence back there, right?
We just put in the fence, yes.
Right. I'd like to see it at least two feet. I don't allow a foot from the property line. Doesn't leave you much to, I mean, it, it's gonna be a debris trap. So, I'd like to see minimally two feet. I'd like to see three feet, but I could live with two.
Okay. Brian Riddell, anything you want to add to us? Any questions?
Yeah, mine's, mine's two feet. I, I think two feet is, you need at least two feet.
Daddy.
My daughter, my daughter didn't want you to know she's done with dinner, okay?
Okay, very good.
Very good. I hope you like it. Anybody want to speak in favor?
Charlie, did I skip anybody any chance?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Anybody else want to speak in favor of the project? One chance, second chance, final call for that. All that party hearing closed. Do we have any correspondence?
Counselor McCarthy, Mike.
Okay, we'll give him one second. Let me just, Jay, I'm great with you. Any correspondence?
A letter from the GPW with no comments.
Okay. Anybody opposed or undecided for a city councillor? Counselor McCarthy, what do you have to say?
Thanks, Mr. Vice Chair. I just wanted to ask the question. I know the concern when something's too close to the fence and leaves and debris and whatever, but when Mr. Duca, I think, answered Mr. O'Brien's question, was there anything that's there now that says it should be a certain amount of feet? Or is this just a, a request, just a, was it, was there anything in, in writing that says we gotta have it two or one or three? I guess I'll direct that to Mr. Duca if there was any, it sounded like, Jay, it was one way or it could be a foot or it could be three feet.
Yeah, Counselor McCarthy, the requires six feet for any accessory structure. And like I was saying before, small sheds, a lot of small properties just don't have the room to, to do that. As far as one foot or half a foot or up against the fence, I think it's a preference for the owner, how they're gonna maintain it. I don't think it's a problem for the putting person. But, you know, there ought to be a way to clean back there if there's any debris. But, there's, there's really no guidelines. I think if you go around the city, some kids will be up against the fence, some may have a foot and it's all over the map. But, I, I don't have any problem either way.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that, that clear. Cause I, I wasn't sure whether, and I understand what the board is, is aiming at because you do, if you don't have enough room, as Board Member Riddell stated, he has two feet to get in around the back. A lot of things blow around and accumulate back there and could, it could actually damage the shed, could rot it out if something wasn't moved or cleaned out after a while. So, no, I just, just a, just wanted to get a little information, that's all. But, I support, I support the Dwyer requests. I know the family, they've been in Adam Shore for a long time and they've actually spread out a little bit down there. So, it's good to have them in the neighborhood. They're good people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody opposed or undecided? Oh, no. Mr. Rutherford, you have your hand up.
I mute myself again. Here we go.
All right.
I swear to tell the truth again.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay. Um, I left the courtroom, sorry. I'm back. But, basically, I was just looking at the map. It is great. I kind, there are some good things about being, you know, not at the meeting live. I have like seven computers. I have tons of access to information. So, when people are talking, I can do real-time research and I'm ready for really good questions. I noticed on this one that there's a, there's a double lot. And I, I just want to make sure I don't misspeak. I mean, is there, is that extra lot next to this property, is that owned by the owner or does someone else own that?
That's owned by the Dwyers.
Okay, so, I mean, though, I, I myself, I own, a lot of the lots in Quincy are non-conforming. So, if someone had, say, a shed that they built back in the 50s or 60s before the zoning and stuff, that's kind of, the neck reminds me of, of my cottage down in Onset. And I kind of think, you know, I'm, I'm gonna give my two cents, cause that's what I do. I try to figure out what my role is. Well, my role is from my two cents. And, well, if the zoning says, I was just looking it up, Commissioner Duca, about what the rule was. And I thought the rule was in Quincy was that if it was under 200 square feet and you were at least six feet away from your neighbor's property, then you didn't even need a variance. So, they're here today because they're not building one over 200, not for size, but they're here because they want to build within that six feet. So, are we talking about one foot in the corner on both sides? So, I'm not sure what variance, like, what distance are we talking about? Are they asking for two different side variances or just one side variance there?
Just to clarify, building code, you don't need a building permit for sheds less than 200 square feet. But, under our ordinance, under the zoning ordinance, sheds and accessory structures are supposed to be six feet from property. So, I'm trying to line up the two and I'll try to do that in September if the Council wants to, you know, look at that. But, I guess it really boils down to how much room do you need to clean, keep it clean back there. So, I think that's what the data is here.
Well, I mean, it, it's, the other thing you got to consider is that the neighbors behind him and the neighbors to the left, they have very small lots too. So, therefore, their yards are very small and so they don't have much distance between their house. Like, he actually has that nice buffer on his other side. He doesn't even want to put the shed anywhere, even on that other side at all. You know, he could put it one foot, one foot in the corner on the other side. I think that would be a fair compromise. Let him do it one foot, one foot, but put it on the corner of the lot, of that first lot that's right behind his house to let him go all the way in the back of the house, but in the middle. So, therefore, he's not harming. Now, let's say if he sells that lot to someone else and someone builds a house there, they're now gonna have a shed that's one foot away. But, at least they would have saw that shed was already built there before they bought that lot. So, I'm just, you know, the goal of zoning is to protect the everybody. So, you know, if you are gonna give this, I don't think two is good. I think three is a minimum that you should do. So, if you are gonna grant it, do it three on both sides, no less than that. Or, like I said, if they want to do one, do it on the other corner. I would agree with that. But, this is a weird ask. I don't really understand it. So, I mean, thank you. That's all.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Yeah. Anybody else who opposed or undecided? Final call, first call, second call, last call, third call. All that part of the hearing closed. Gentlemen, what are we gonna say?
I'm good, as long as it moves to at least two feet.
Yeah. I agree. Two feet, both back and, and inside if it wasn't called for in the back.
I agree, two feet on both sides.
Russell Chin?
I'm opposed to the two feet. I'm put off by the fact that the law requires six feet. He's got a double lot. He's come to us looking for a one-foot exception. Not a one-foot, five-foot exception, right? Cause he's supposed to be six feet away. And he comes asking for permission for one foot away. That's not even meaning us halfway.
Okay.
So, I'm opposed.
All right, very good. And, well, Greg, what do you think? I'm thinking at least two feet.
So, I've come to you trying to do the right thing. I looked at the rules. It says six feet. I really wanted to get your opinion on this and I really appreciate your opinion. I've noticed that every single house, except for one in my neighborhood, has their shed less than six feet away from their property line. I don't know if they came to you for, for permission for that or if they did that just on their own. But, I want to play by the rules and come to you for, for your approval. I can guarantee you that I will keep the space in between the fence and the shed clean. Because I keep my, my property as clean as anyone in the neighborhood. This would be the optimal place to put a shed in our yard. We have redone our entire property up to this point. We used to use our basement for these types of tools and toys. Now, we've redone our basement. So, now we need a place for this shed. And this would be the best place for them. I want to have my kids, let my kids run around the property as they, as they should. And I really believe that whether it's six feet or one foot away, this shed is gonna be properly built and cleaned out and maintained very well.
What I'm asking you is, do you think that by two feet acceptable? The yes or no question?
Uh, uh.
Because if not, we're gonna probably, we're gonna probably turn you down right now.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I do find two feet acceptable.
All right. All right, Charlie. Let's have a motion for two feet and we'll take the vote and we'll see what we get.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 20-56, Kristen Dwyer for a variance to construct a storage shed on the premises number 37 Braintree Avenue, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance with the shed being situated two feet off both property lines minimally.
Wait one more second there?
Second.
Okay. So, a roll call vote. Maureen, can you help us out with that?
I sure can. Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Oh.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Brian Riddell?
Brian Riddell?
Yes.
Michael Pobey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Over. Next, oh.
And I pass on a vote of four to one.
Four to one, right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next case, matter number twenty dash seventy-seven, Nicholas Jade Stragas for a special permit binding to use the space as a specialty auto repair shop on the premises number forty-two to forty-eight Federal F. With the applicant or their representative here.
Hello.
Hello, you are Nicholas, okay?
I am.
What, what do you wanna do?
So, my partner and I, and I say partner, he's um, the mechanic that I've been learning from for the past five years, apprentice, I think, rather. Um, found this spot, it's a, is a vacant uh, industrial building, uh, partially used currently, um, by the owner, um, for woodworking. It was previously used for auto detailing, um, we simply wanna use it as a specialty shop um, for uh, you know, uh, things like rebuilding and transmission, things of that nature. Um, the first thing we did when we did take on rent from this facility, um, was, you know, kind of brighten it up and, and, you know, it was a pretty rundown um, front and we painted it white, so I think that was fairly well received, we're trying to make the neighborhood better. Um, yeah, and we're willing to operate within whatever guidelines uh, need be to do so.
Instead of a specialty shop, what's the, what's special about it?
Well, I wanted to just make it very clear, we're not looking to run like a Jiffy Lube scenario, we're not looking to have a ton of traffic coming in and out. Um, these are older cars for the most part, um, these are cars like, you know, the car that, um, Arthur, uh, my uh, mentor uh, taught me how to work on, I, you know, an old seventy-two uh, car. Things that require a bit more time, like such as rebuilding transmission or, um, you know, doing an engine swap, things of that nature, it's not a high-volume place. It's only one lift, um, any sort of additional, you know, buildup of an additional job that can be parked with inside the units. Um, it will not affect uh, parking on the street whatsoever. Um, like I said, our goal is to, to kind of brighten up, um, the side of the street that is a bit more industrial than not. Um, yeah.
You have only one lift, is lift there already?
Correct. Yes, I, I had put that in there without knowing that this um, procedure needed, um, and uh, we, since learning, we had not started operating and we have not, um, and we've been renting it since September. Um, we've been trying to do this by the book.
And you're renting it now?
We are renting it now, we've been, we've been kinda eating the rent, uh, for the past eight months. But that was, you know, my fault. Should, should, should've seen that.
Yeah, understood, understood. Um, okay, does the board have any questions?
But, uh, yeah, just for clarification, you're, you're having the white portion of the building, not the red portion on the corner, right?
Correct, that is correct. That was what we painted white, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Uh, Mr. Hemel, go ahead.
So have you been operating there since September? Cause I know that Jimmy Anderson was running a um, detailing shop there previously.
He, he was, um, we have not, I've been working on my own car and just kinda fighting time until we can take on customers, uh, which is a pretty dire space right now, we could really use that uh, income to get the rent paid. Um, this is, you know, more or less me paying back to, um, a, as the apprentice, uh, you know, my, Arthur, the master mechanic has uh, never owned his own shop, he's been a resident renting in Quincy for uh, well over a decade, to my knowledge, um, if not longer. Um, you know, this is just kind of paying back to him, um, my intent is to give him full ownership of the garage once we're up and running.
Jay, do they need a license to operate? That auto repair shop?
I'm muted. I'm muted.
Yes, yes, they do.
Nicholas, do you, do you have a, currently have a license in the city?
That, that, that'll be next on the agenda, I wanted to go bit by bit rather than just kind of doling out everything all at once.
Uh, just, just as a point, it's, it's impossible to receive every license and permit that you need all at once, so uh, applicants usually choose uh, what they wanna try to get first.
That. Uh, Mr. Chin, do you have any comments?
No, no. I do not have any questions yet.
And Mr. Riddell?
Just one, so the only off-street parking is in the building?
I beg your pardon?
Is the only off-street parking in the building?
Um, there's uh, the off-street parking that lines the sidewalk of the building, um, which is for everyone, it's not simply for us.
Okay.
I mean, that's kinda, that's kind of a tight neighborhood there and it's a one-way street now. Coming, coming up.
Absolutely is. Totally, and you know, as I mentioned, that's why I was really trying to specify that we're not trying to run a Jiffy Lube, it is simply Arthur and myself. Uh, we're not looking to expand it, uh, this is simply just to uh, you know, kind of pay it forward back, back to the man who taught me and um, you know, kind of brighten up the neighborhood, which was our intent with, um, you know, painting it initially, and that'll only improve further from that.
Alright, thank you very much, um, anybody wanna speak in favor? Speak in favor of this? Once, twice, last call for that, for that part of the hearing closed. Maureen, do we have any correspondence?
I certainly do, I have a letter from Richard Sweeney, one Independence Ave, in opposition. Concerns with parking, um, noise, smells, potential oil leaks, et cetera. And I have a letter from Board Counselor Brian Palmucci. He says he received calls and emails from concerned neighbors and local businesses about this proposed use. The concern expressed to him, which he's going to share, is the lack of adequate parking for such business. Additionally, Garter Street is now a one-way and the garage in question is accessible only from Garter Street. It is difficult to imagine that this use would not have a significant negative impact on this neighborhood. I respectfully request you consider the lack of parking during your deliberation on this matter. And that is it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, any going opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call?
Hello, uh, this is uh, Richard.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Yeah. This is Richard Sweeney, uh, I wrote that letter, uh, I own the house at twenty twenty-two Garter Street. And uh, in speaking with uh, some of the other neigh- neighbors, I don't know if they're on the, on the phone and will get a chance to speak. But um, you know, everyone uh, is fearful when they uh, Mr. Anderson had that car deal detailing shop, uh, it was a nightmare. They were washing cars on the street, they were parking on the sidewalk. Um, quite frankly, there, there's no room for cars, there's no parking lot, there's no place for these people to uh, drop off a car with a tow truck. Um, it's just not an appropriate location for this type of business and I'm opposed to it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
We wish him well, but it's just not, it's not the ideal place for an auto body shop.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
You're on the phone, use the star nine.
If, if, may I address that last comment?
No, not yet, okay, okay, you translate it. Anyone else? Gonna call that part of the hearing closed, uh, go ahead, James.
Yeah, I know, and I, once again, you know, I, I'm sure you can imagine that there's uh, a very big difference in balling you when you're doing, you know, car washes as opposed to specialty things, as much as I like to idolize Arthur's ability, I don't think he can, you know, do engine swaps uh, that quickly or, or and, and like I said, we're willing to conform to whatever guidelines that the neighborhood, um, you know, would like to set in, in order to make this work. Um, you know, this is something that means a lot to us, we, we spent a long time trying to find a location that would make it work. Um, and you know, we're, we're, you know, once again, the, the trying of paints was, was more or less a sign to try to show you that, that was our intent, was to make the neighborhood better as opposed to worse. Like I said, any sort of additional guidelines that you'd like us to operate in, we're more than happy to. We're not looking to make it a busy street, we're not looking to make it anything than better. Um, you know, we're, this is a small business trying to start.
Right, right. Well, you know, the problem, one of the problems that I'm seeing right now is that during the, you get, get this permit, you get the, start your business, maybe it doesn't work out, you sell the business and you sell it to, well, we say Jiffy Lube, I know. But you sell to somebody who is going to need to have high volumes. For example, auto detailing gentleman had to have a lot of um, customers that don't stay in the business. And it, and ultimately his business, I guess, failed too. So I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe you're not an issue, but your successor might be, whoever they are. And I know everyone, everyone wants to think they're gonna stay in business forever, but most businesses fail. So that's my, my two cents.
No, that is a fair point, and you know, to, to reiterate, Arthur is a master Land Rover mechanic of, of, you know, over thirty years, he's been doing this a long time. He, he will retire doing such, I, I have no intention on driving a business where I'm not a mechanic. This is, like I said, simply for him, um, to, to operate and own his own operation as opposed to working for someone else as he has done. So, um, you know, his career. Um, is there a way that we could put it in an order that it, that it ends with Arthur? Um, and, and this entity, um, ju- just so that, that, to mitigate that concern?
Okay, I don't think so, but thank you for the, the offer there. Um, Charlie O'Brien, what do you think?
The, the difficulty I have is I, I, I would've thought that you would've done more outreach to the counselor and to the neighbors up there to alleviate their fears and worry about what's gonna take place, especially without the parking. If you're, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have parking uh, for a number of cars inside the building, it's gotta be limited. And then what happens if you end up getting stuck waiting for parts? And the cars end up, you, you become overwhelmed, instead of having six or eight cars, you end up with twelve or fifteen waiting to be worked on. I'm just saying, that's, that's the issue.
And this would be by appointment only?
No, again, again, you end up with six cars in there, your bays are all filled and the next thing you know, you got three guys waiting there and it's, it's difficult, with the lack of parking on the, on the street, i- it's a difficult sell for me. Um, that, that's my point, um, I know that you can contain them in the, in the garage and you can take care of them in there and you can work on them. I, I just see that there's more issues than, than, than I'm, I'm, I'm being presented with it.
Would, would it be possible, would it be possible for us to increase the parking by after a certain hour? What, what uh, is access to our garage was allowed to be used as street parking until, let's say, you know, a certain time in the morning? That way we'd be increasing that.
I don't know if there's a parking ban up there, I don't know if that side's no parking, I, I didn't happen to notice that when I was up there. Um, again, it's a difficult area, some of the work that's on Federal Street's seasonal and there's a lot of trucks and other things that are, that are more restrictive up there, so.
No, and I, I completely understand, I would like to point out, one of the neighbors had come over to us unprompted and said that they had written in favor of this to one of the um, board counselors, I'm not sure if that was received or not, but that was completely unprompted, but it was the owner of the property right next to. The building, um, and then the only thing I'd urge you to think.
We are thinking, okay, I think, I think we're kinda set on what we're doing here, Mr. Hemel?
It uh, I mean, they, they made that street one-way for a reason, because there was too much traffic on a very small street that people live on. Um, Jimmy Anderson's been around Quincy for a long time and he made a mess of his shop and it, 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 once again, they made the street one-way for a reason because people live on that street, I think it's inappropriate for the business you wanna put in there.
Thank you. Mr. Chin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with the board members regarding the, uh, the tech parking situation. Also note that if he's a Land Rover specialist, he's gonna be squamps with work.
Have you ever owned a Land Rover, Russ?
I do not, I do not know.
Tell him, Russell, not yet.
Okay, yeah, okay. Uh, well, I, I see this going down, uh.
Can I just, can I just, can I just ask a question?
I'm sorry, Brian.
We're, we're in business B here, are we not? Like, I mean, I mean, this, this, this is a business-zoned use of a property. You have industrial, you know, people coming and going across the streets from this property. Uh, I mean, we're, 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 we're already limited in the city as to where we're allowed to put businesses. We had, we had another building the last time I was on, uh, for another business and granted that, uh, same thing about in residential neighborhoods. Um, you know, you know, where, where we ran into some issues there, sorry, I got a little girl carrying on my leg here. I, I just think at some point we need to, we either need to redesign, rezonate, rezone these areas or you know, I mean, we're, we're changing every business use into residential and we're running out of options to put businesses anywhere. And a man like this who wants to open a business in the city of Quincy has nowhere to go. That's just my own two cents, I get, I get what everybody's saying, but you know, I, I, we're just, we're just, I, I just had to say it, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine, alright. Um, well, uh, here's the thing, we uh, looks like, it, it looks like you're gonna go down. So I'm thinking that we could perhaps, uh, have you come back with something else, another idea. Uh, we could withdraw this case without prejudice and come back with something else. Mr. Duker? Mr. Duker? No?
Mr. Duker?
Yes.
You want to?
I was just gonna ask, uh, your, not your, not your opinion, but uh, if we, if we withdrew this without prejudice, but he has come up with something completely different?
Well, you could vote it down and he could come back with something completely different, um, as long as it is different. And the planning board would have to agree that it's different. Um, in that case, he could withdraw without prejudice and just come back with something different, that would be the simplest uh, way to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
A question, would the planning board give him direction?
He could, he could ask to meet with the planning director and lead director and get some direction, he could do that, yes.
I would like that.
It would help him.
Alright.
And also I recommend that neighbors be spoken to?
Paul Counselor Palmucci up too?
I, I can, I can say the planning department probably won't be involved with a neighborhood meeting, that's something that he should reach. He hasn't already reached out, he should reach out to the board council.
Right.
Is, is there any other like, this has just been such a journey, I'm just trying to learn and I apologize for my ignorance, but is there any form of scenario or, or is this a matter of titling what, what it is that we do or how we go about it? Because, I mean, I, I'm coming to you with, with e- every open intention of complying with anything you're willing to throw out there within rules, guidelines, timeframes.
If, if you look around the neighborhood, most of the repair shops, you usually see that there are parking lots. So, because you have to park the car somewhere and uh, you don't have one, so. Uh, I'm, I'm recommending that right now you withdraw it without prejudice and come back with something.
Okay.
You know, you could vote.
Is there, I, is, just so I'm clear, is that like, how much, is there a timeframe that I have to wait, is there any rules around that? How quickly we can reapply?
I want you to call Jay Duker up tomorrow, and talk to him about this, okay with you, Mr. Duker?
Yeah, absolutely, I was just gonna suggest that, that's a, uh, I, I'd be happy to meet with him and, and kind of give him some direction.
That would be really helpful, cause yeah, it's, it's, it's much needed.
Mike, Brian wanted to say something.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
There's no, there's no way for us to like, I mean, we, we have it limited out here in, in uh, on the, the edge of Quincy Shore Drive and East Quantum Street. They're only allowed to have a certain number of vehicles on premise. Like, well, why, why, why can't we look at doing something like that where you're proving it with two or three cars on premise, that's it? Um, and that, then that's limited internally.
Well, you see, the, the problem with that is I think that this, that's a licensing board issue and not our issue.
I, I believe that, that, that the, the lot down at the end of Quincy Shore Drive was a zoning issue, that was, it was a zoning requirement to how many cars, now, licensing and, and, and Jay in terms of policing that would be an issue, but I'm just trying to find a solution for this guy, you know, it seems like there, there's no way out.
Right, right.
We're really willing to comply with whatever you put in front of us.
Charlie, can you make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number.
Should I withdraw? I don't know.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna withdraw you. Okay, we're gonna let you talk to Jay and we're gonna let you talk to the licensing and see what they come up with and maybe have you come back to us with some, um, some other issues, go ahead, Brian.
Brian, I'm locked.
Can, can, who doesn't, sorry, I'm still muted. I, I, um, does it make sense for us to have him come back in two weeks? If, I mean, if we, if Jay can have a conversation and you can figure anything out, you can talk to the counselor or come back in a month, I mean, if you withdraw, then we have to re-advertise. I mean, if you withdraw, then we have to re-advertise.
Yeah, that's true. All right, but, but, good idea, Brian, I like that. You come back in about a month?
I can come back as soon as you'd like me.
Charlie, what do we have for days?
You wanna do May twenty-fifth?
Um, the soonest possible date would be great, just because we can't.
That would be May twenty-fifth, that will give you time to have a meeting with Jay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, let's do that.
And if you have to come up with the new plan, we can get that two weeks prior to the hearing.
Okay, and just to be clear, is the, the new plan with regards to how we are operating, how we are?
No, maybe a parking layout of some sort.
Why don't you talk with Mr. Duka tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not in an opinion one way or the other, how many cars you should have. But I'll just be glad to meet Nicholas to just give him some ideas and, and uh, translate what the board is trying to say and impact. That's what we intend to try. Thank you.
Charlie, give us a motion.
Okay, what was the date on that, Noreen?
May twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-seven-seven, Nicholas James Fregas, for a special permit of finding to use the space as a specialty auto repair shop on the premises number forty-two to forty-eight Federal Avenue. I make a motion to have a, um.
To finish the hearing until May twenty-fifth?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All else in favor?
Aye.
Close? I have it, thank you. All right.
See you guys on the twenty-third, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to our next matter, matter twenty-one-two, Kyle Costa for refining variance to construct a mudroom and deck in the front of the house in a second-floor addition on the premises number thirty-five Meadow Street. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Why don't you, uh, tell us what you want to do?
Uh, so we're looking to go up that, that second floor to the house, three-bedroom, full bath. Uh, we're gonna take the wall down on the first floor to make, it's currently, uh, two bedrooms on the first floor and a loft bedroom on the second floor. But you can't really move around up there, everything you're doing is hunched. I'm only five-nine and I can't stand up straight. So we're gonna do is three bedrooms upstairs because we have two kids and then take the wall down on the first floor and make that into a dining room. And while we're doing that, currently, the entrance to our house is on the side of our house, so it's really hard to get anything in. Uh, so we're gonna move the front entrance to the front of the house and seal off that side entrance. It's siding up and just make that the side of the house.
All right. Board members have any questions?
Not me.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Mr. Chen?
Okay.
Mr. Raydell?
Kyle, does that, does that impact your parking at all? Do you get any more out of that or anything like that on the side of the street?
Uh, nope, doesn't impact parking and we're keeping the same number of bedrooms.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yep.
Does anybody want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor of this? Once, twice, call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, Noreen, do we have any first party?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, a letter from the DTW with no comment.
Okay, great. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? No call? Yeah, any, any hands up, any star nine?
I don't see anything.
Okay. Um, first call, second call, third call, call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, it's a small house, guys. It's a small house in a. Charlie, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it, it looks like it could do some work. Um, the intent with a growing family there and, um, I'll be in favor.
Okay. Mr. Raydell?
Small house, tight street, but great family and anything we can do to keep them here would be, you know, uh, appreciative. I know, I've known Kyle a long time and he's, he's a great, great addition. He does a ton of work with the kids around the community and coaching and everything like that, so would love to see them be able to expand and stay.
Okay, Mr. Himmel?
Appreciate that.
Same thing, I think it's a nice design to increase the size of a small house, so I'd be in favor.
And Mr. Chen?
But, um, I, I think it'll be, um, you know, good for the neighborhood. He's five feet from the sidewalks, a little bit tight for me, but I understand that the, the lot is small. And he's got, he's got other conditions there that warrant the, uh, the approval, so I'm in favor.
And I agree with that too. So, um, Mr. Brian, if you can give us a vote.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one-two, Kyle Costa for a variance finding to construct a mudroom and a deck on the front of the house in a second-floor addition on the premises number thirty-five Meadow Street. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested variance finding.
One second?
Second.
Second? A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
Close? Yeah, I have it. You're all set.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Take care. Right. The second page. ZBA twenty-one-ten, Hardy and Mann Design Group for a variance finding to construct a second-story expansion over the existing garage. Property will remain a single-family on the premises number thirty, Tottenham Street. Is there, app, is the applicant or their representative here?
Uh, yes. My name's Chairman from Hardy and Mann Design Group.
How are you paid?
Good, um, if I can share my screen, I can give you a little presentation of the, um, package.
What?
Uh.
Can we, uh, get him to share the screen?
He, he should be good for it.
Okay. Mr. Ben, you should be okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, one second. This is not the, um, I think I had it on, but. Right here.
For a second, you had it.
Yep. So basically, um, just want to show you the. This is a site plan, the, the site is in, uh, industrial song and it received a CBA approval to build a existing house there. And you can see on the right-hand side of the, uh, page is the record drawings of a hospital print, uh, from the ISD. And on the, on the left-hand side is the proposed, um, site plan, which show the proposed addition over the garage. Um, and this section here, um, this is where the existing garage is on the first floor. Basically, with the pandemic, um, clients like to build a office above the garage so you can work from home more, um, efficiently. And I can show you some photo exhibit. This is the lot we are looking at. So basically, he's just asking for permission to add a second story on the garage. So no expansion of the footprint and, um, no, we will work, no ground, no, no excavation or anything, just build on top of the garage. Um, and then, um, a picture to show the front of the house, again, the street is a little on the way, but, uh, with the addition on the garage and you can see the, um, basically, the, um, I think it's ran in into the neighborhood pretty well.
Okay?
Yep. This, this is a button, a button to the right, you can see, actually see the garage, so it's just a room extending out right above.
Okay.
That, that's, that's all I, I think it's pretty straightforward if, um, the board has any questions.
Yeah, does the board have any questions?
Uh, no questions for me.
Mr. Chen?
Yes, I have a question, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, what's going into, um, I saw you draw a line into the, the roof area on the second floor, it looks like. So is there going to be any expansion on the second floor of the house with that?
No, it's, no, it's, it's from the existing second floor, just a punch out walk into the new office space.
Actually, there's no, there's no expansion.
No, and, uh, there's no new exterior, uh, doors or anything from the house or, or access to the new space on the interior.
Thank you.
Mr. Raydell?
What's your existing, uh, square footage on the house?
Um, I have to.
Do you know what, do you know what the completed is, Chris?
Um, well, I think Mr. Peter Ain, he's, he's the owner, he's on the call too, so maybe he can tell you the exact square footage.
Yeah, hi, this is Peter. Um, yeah, I think the exact square footage is six thousand square feet, if I remember correctly, when it first bought up.
I mean, the four, the four area.
I think that's the, I think that's the lot. I was trying to figure out the, the size of the house.
Oh, the house, uh, eighteen hundred square feet, eighteen thirty-two, somewhere around there.
And so you're adding like an additional eight hundred, is that what it looks like?
Uh, the, the square footage of that room is, uh, fourteen feet by twenty-four, around, around three hundred square feet.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
What am I missing? Anyone?
Mr. Himmel?
Mr. Himmel?
There's no, um, no second egress from this, uh, addition?
No, just, uh, it's the, the access to the office space is going to be from the internal second floor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody want to speak in favor of this plan? In favor? I saw we had a little chat, uh, with those, with the neighbors saying that they were in favor. Uh, John, are you, are you in favor or not in favor?
I'm, I'm in favor.
I'm in.
Yeah, I'm, okay. Uh, was anybody? Anybody else opposed, uh, anyone wants to speak in favor of the project?
And, um, uh, sir, I believe there's a chat sent on the chat room, uh, from the neighbor, uh, who has no issues.
Okay, now, how do we show that to everybody?
It's on the chat room, so.
Okay. Um, all right, we have, um, this is what Winnie Wang, she says, I live three doors down, I have no issue with the expansion regarding Tottenham Street. Okay?
Uh, John and I live next door, it's Peter and I also am in favor.
Get your address, please.
Uh, twenty-six Tottenham Street.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any correspondence?
DTW letter with no comment.
Okay.
Thank you for being seen.
Really? Uh, anybody opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Is the rest of the floor used there? No?
Not seeing any.
Not seeing any? Uh, first call? Second call? Third call, call that part of the hearing over. Um, Mr. O'Brien, what do you say?
Um, I'm in favor, I mean, it's a dead-end street, all houses are the same, um, it, it looks like it's gonna be maximum build. I don't think you'd be able to get anything else up there unless you put doors up there. I, I don't see that happening. Um, I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Mr. Himmel?
I'll be voting in favor as well.
Mr. Chen?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Raydell?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Uh, Charlie, do we have a question?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we got in case twenty, uh, ZBA twenty-one-ten, Hardy and Mann Design Group for a variance of finding to construct a second-story expansion over the existing garage. The property will remain a single-family on the premises number thirty, Tottenham Street, Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding.
Second.
Second, um, on the motion, seeing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. United, thank you. Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Man, take care. Now. Now, we already, uh, moved through this street, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that brings us to zoning board twenty-one- nineteen, Brian LaRoche for a variance to amend CBA decision Z nineteen-five-two to permit the construction of a fourth-story, rebased octo by, oh, there's a, on the premises number eight-ten Shoreside Road. Uh, I see Brian's there now.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, uh, hello, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, uh, this, uh, project we brought before the zoning board in, uh, August of twenty-nineteen. Uh, and at that time, uh, we were asking for a variance, uh, for a number of stories, uh, for this, uh, it was two dwellings of one lot. Uh, the property got, uh, developed, it was, uh, the approved plans were sold to a developer who developed the property and has since, uh, sold one of them. Um, so the completed project, I think, uh, everybody's pretty happy with the way it looks. It fits in pretty well with the neighborhood, it's definitely an improvement over what was there. Um, in the course of doing the work and the developer not understanding the zoning board decision, um, they did finish the top level. And, uh, so they built exactly what was approved, the, the shell of the building and the, the bulk and mass of the building is what was approved. But what they, um, they didn't realize is that they shouldn't have finished the upper level, um, of the prop, uh, the main house. So in effect, it created a fourth level. Um, and so that would be in violation of the zoning approval. Um, and so, um, it would create two more, uh, bedrooms for the property. Uh, I'd like to share my screen, which I think would helps tell the story, so you can see what it looks like. That's okay?
Yeah.
So the, um, this is a view of what the house looks like. Um, and because it's in floodplain, it, you know, it sits only seven feet, uh, elevation that the garage level, it's pretty low. Um, and, uh, so the garage counts as a story, uh, because it has to, uh, get high enough above the floodplain. Uh, first floor, uh, sits just at fifteen or sixteen feet above, uh, sea level, uh, which is not that far above, uh, floodplain. So here's the first true story is the main level living and then the second level and then what they created up here. Within the eve of the structure, they, there's a window on the front and a window on the back and they, they put bedrooms up there. So they'd like to get, um, your blessing, uh, to have that an approved condition. Uh, they, they understand that they, they should have asked before, uh, they went ahead and did it and they, you know, developers, you know, understands is, is mistake. Um, and, um, but I think the good news about the property is that, uh, they did do a really nice job with the development. Uh, they didn't change anything about the original approval, the bulk of the house. Um, it goes from what was approved as a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom. Uh, they do have parking under, uh, there's, uh, two garage doors here, so they can fit, um, two cars under. And then there are parking for cars beside the house as well. Uh, so they meet all of the requirements for zoning for number of cars and parking, which would be a concern, having a house of that size with that number of bedrooms. Um, so the good news is they have met, uh, that requirement, so.
So, Brian, why they sent you back here? They, they were afraid of us?
Uh, well, he, uh, the developer, yeah, good question. The developer hired me to, um, uh, make some amendments to the drawings. Uh, what we did is we ended up putting, there wasn't a garage underneath, uh, we didn't have these doors here during the approval. So we did do a minor, uh, amendment, uh, with, uh, Commissioner Duka, uh, which allowed this, um, condition. So they, I was hired to do that, so they asked me to come back in front of the board.
Well, turns out that you're kind of lucky, I suppose, because you ended up with more parking spaces than you would have had originally.
Correct.
So, so, uh, do they want to have any questions on the board?
Yeah, I do, I, I'd like to know, did we restrict that there would not be any occupancy up there when it was, when the permission was granted?
So I have the zoning decision in front of me, open. Um, it was not in the decision, uh, specifically, but it was part of the evidence and testimony presented, uh, a question. Let's see if I can read it verbatim for you. Uh, Chairman, uh, Akins, uh, did read, uh, did ask the question during the, uh, presentation about the upper level, whether it would be occupied and we did present to the board that it would not. about the upper level, whether it would be occupied, and we did present to the board that it would not. But the decision is not really specific about, uh, that level, other than it was for three, uh, three full stories. So, and that would be a four-story, so. You can kind of sort of infer that the decision didn't allow occupancy up there.
Thank you.
Trying to read, so keep going, and I'll see if I can find the language.
Uh, Mr. Chen, you have any questions?
What was the name of this developer?
Uh, Saif Wan Sa is the developer, um. He, um, he was on the call for a while, but, uh, the meeting ran longer than, uh, he expected, so he had to, uh, he had another engagement he had to step out for. Uh, if you would like, I could ask him to join, uh, rejoin the call.
Just, um, curious to know, I mean, when they applied for the building permit, they would have attached the drawings and so forth? And, uh, there would have been inspections done to see whether there was compliance with the drawings?
Um, yeah.
In the decision.
Yeah, I wasn't involved during the construction, and then once, uh, we got to the end, they asked me to do condo docs, and in a conversation with the, uh, real estate agent, uh, they described the upper level, and that's when I realized, uh, there was problem. So I let, um, uh, Paul McCarthy know in the building department what I learned, and, um, at the final inspection, he did raise this to them formally.
Just, uh.
Uh, okay, no, Mike, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, you have anything else, Mr. Chen?
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit taken aback by this, to be honest with you. Um, and worried about the ramifications in the future for people putting in a fourth level. Uh, and then asking for forgiveness later when we told them not to do it the first time. Then they do it, then they come back, say, well, we did it, and now we want you to revise your original opinion and say it was okay that we did it, even though you didn't the first time. That kind of rubs me the wrong way.
Yeah.
Be honest with you.
I can see that. Uh, Mr. Himmel.
I can see that my, if this was presented originally as a five-bedroom, I can think, see that, I can see the top of Marty's head blowing off. Um, that's a big increase, three bedrooms to five bedrooms is a substantial increase of what was originally approved. And you're right, it rubs me the wrong way, I do not like begging forgiveness as opposed to originally asking permission.
Mr. Ray Dell. Any questions?
Uh, Brian, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, so, uh, I'm 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 a little confused on the parking, so I know we have two separate dwelling units here. So the parking that you put in, Brian, is under the rear building, is that correct?
Uh, there, oh, yeah, that's a good question, so there are two dwellings on on the one lot, the the rear is what we call the carriage house, it's one bedroom, it's a small, uh, apartment above the garage. Um, and it has a garage under with two parking spaces. Uh, so the, um, and and in front of the garage is, uh, their tandem parking spots, so. Uh, you could put two cars in the garage at that property, and then also cars in the driveway as well, um.
So, so the the parking that you show, though, on your main house now, that's new, that was never there before. So you add, so your your drawings just don't show the 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 total parking, is that what's going on?
Uh, I can show you a site plan, which would help, um, I'll share a screen so you can see.
Because I'm looking at, I'm looking at, uh, your original, um, option, I just can't figure out what these additional parking spots are coming through, sorry.
Yeah, no, good, fair question.
Sorry, I I thought I had this map, oh, here we go.
That's all.
Here we go, got it. Okay, uh, so the, this is the lot at eight through ten Shoreside. Um, the main house, uh, is the black outline here, uh, it now has a two-car garage underneath, uh, the structure. So the picture that I showed you was the front elevation of this structure, so there's two spots there. The, this is the approved, uh, site plan from the zoning hearing, uh, the last time we presented to you, so this is what was presented. Um, so in this scheme, there's a carriage house at the rear, which has a two-car garage under. Uh, and then in front of that is tandem parking spaces for four. So in effect, you can get, uh, eight parking spaces on this, uh, property, uh, off-street.
Perfect, and and so these are condo units, am I correct? They're two separate condo units?
They are, uh, yes, that is correct.
Essentially, yeah, so, and i- is the, is the cottage house is sold at this point, and the main house is not, is that where?
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's all all I had for for right now.
Thank you.
Hey, did we have anybody out? I don't think I did. Um. Anybody want, want to, does anyone want to speak in favor of this?
Do you have John Rutherford's hand up?
John, are you in favor?
No.
Okay, then hold on then. Um, in favor, first call, second call, third call, that part of the hearing closed. Uh, Maureen, any correspondence?
Yep, DPW letter with no comments.
Uh, it's an easy one today, huh? Good. Uh, opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, this, uh, councillor, do you want to speak? Councillor McCarthy?
Um, I talked to, thank you, Vice Chair, I talked to, uh, Jay Duca earlier today, and, uh, you know, I'm I'm kind of siding with the board, I was not aware either when I first saw this a couple of weeks ago, the announcement for the, for the hearing on zoning, I was pretty sure I knew the house, because I had dealt with it with Brian, and then, um, really unaware that they had, you know, gone the extra mile without permission, seeking forgiveness, has been said by the board, and I'm, I tend to agree with the board that, um, these are things that we don't want to happen down there, and I think this board does a great job on being flexible to a lot of different things across the city, especially in Ward One, where there are a few of these situations where there are two structures on, on a lot, and you guys do a tremendous job taking a look at it, so. I, um, I don't want this to happen, no, I really don't have any comment, but, um, I talked to Jay today and, uh, and got up to speed, because I I, um, looked at it, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, and said, what is this coming back, and now I fully understand why it's back, so, that's all I'll say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Hello again, um, John Rutherford, sixty-two Brown Wall Road. Um, basically, I videotape these things, because I can't remember either, you know, all I remember is that I do remember this project. I can't remember if I spoke in favor, if I spoke against this before. I'll watch the videotape from this, you know, later, although it's gonna take forever to find that, because I'm not as organized, that was funny, that guy that was going, looking through his computer file, I thought that was someone from the board. Um, and I was impressed on how organized his computer was, but that was the attorney, how organized he was with all his files on his computer. So, he's a good attorney, let's not take that away from him, great presentation.
Actually, he's he's an architect, but this.
Okay, well, he sounds like an attorney too, he's a great, he's a great salesman person. Um, but but basically, the, you guys are the zoning board, you're like a judge. You don't have a judge, you're like a jury, you're the people that basically make the rules and say you can break the rules, or you can't break the rules, but what you do is you set precedents. And so this would be a terrible precedent, I remember there was some poor guy in Montclair who did this same thing, some Asian, um, gentleman, and he put up the extra roof, and you made him take that part of the roof down. Um, that's already a monster house that is next to his neighbor, and they shoved two dwelling units on one lot in a weird way, to be very dense on top of making that very high. I don't know exactly how, what they asked for before, um, but I certainly know that nobody has ever asked for four stories, no one's ever been granted four stories, I I'm not sure what happens, this was, this is, again, this is a very bad precedent, I mean, I think you're supposed to say that, can I ask this, how high is the house right now? What's the height of the house? Off the ground?
Forty feet.
Okay, so, I mean, so, I mean, I don't know, it's a tough one, I mean, there's no doubt that, um, real estate is an investment, and this investment, um, you know, this is gonna be a negative part of the investment, you know, it's gonna cost some money to not only, when you take a couple bedrooms off and you chop that part of the house off, that's gonna cost money, and you're gonna reduce the value of the house, so it's a giant negative for the developer, but it's a big win for the community in standing up for the, for the, for the code. I mean, four stories, no, okay, so I'm against this, um, I I I want you to say no, please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
Mike, there was a chat, um, Kay Balbin, uh, I believe you can, you can speak.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we live on the road, our just main concern is, again, it's.
What, 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 just give your, give the, the record?
Eleven Shoreside Road.
Okay, thank you.
Our concern is just the traffic and the parking, I mean, the street floods when it rains. So now, you know, and then they, you see these cars go on the, on the side. I mean, how does that carriage house leave then, if the cars are supposedly gonna go on the side, so? You know, the the road's narrow, if we're gonna have, they're gonna have five, five bedrooms, so how many people are gonna be living there? People are gonna be parked on the side of the street, I mean, yeah, narrow road, it floods, you know, we're gonna be directly impacted, so. Just kind of want to keep that in consideration, just how many cars are we looking at and people?
Probably a lot, thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Twice, three times, that part of the hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. That's what I was gonna reiterate after our comments, but my kids started harassing me again, so I apologize, pulling double duty tonight. Um, but, you know, that, the point that the neighbor made, we have a rear carriage house, and I don't even know how we looked at this in parking, and I'm sure it's deeded, because they're condos, but I parked my car in my garage as a member of that dwelling unit that's now sold. I can't get out if you're using stacked parking on both sides of that, that driveway.
Right.
So essentially, you don't have six spots for this property, you know, you might have four if you're lucky.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, what are you thinking?
Uh, well, that that's what the initial question I asked is if that we, did we make sure it was supposed to be unoccupied, that's why they came before us. Um, if that was what we understood, that it wasn't gonna be occupied, and.
Right, we understood three bedrooms.
Huh?
We understood three bedrooms, not five.
Right, and and that that's my biggest issue with it, I mean, I don't know about removing it, but how do you prevent it from becoming a bedroom without us looking at it? I I don't understand that, but, um, I I don't think I can, I can approve this.
Mr. Himmel.
This was approved as three, not as five, um, I I think it's I I don't want to reiterate or say what I have already said, but I mean, I I just absolutely. I can't, I can't go for five over three, I I just can't do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chen.
There's no way I'm voting for this.
Uh, well, Brian, we're gonna.
I mean, my, 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 uh, comments don't matter, but I was gonna say the same thing, there's a few things that this board has been super consistent on. One is multiple dwellings in rez A, I know this was a pre-existing non-conforming, but the other one is thirty-five feet, three, I mean, we've, we've had arguments over here over allowing people to use a third story, now we're gonna talk about a fourth? I'm all set.
Um, Mr. O'Brien? Did you make a motion?
Okay, here we go. Mr. Chairman, regarding case twenty-one dash nineteen, Brian LaRoche for a variance to amend that ZBA decision nineteen dash fifty-two to permit the construction of a fourth story to be made occupiable on the premises number eight to ten Shoreside Road, I make a motion to deny the requested, um, variance.
Anyone second?
Second.
I'm just seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Brian.
Sorry. Thank you, Arul.
Okay.
Next. At number twenty-one dash twenty, Marcelo Correa for a variance to construct a one-story addition on the premises numbered eleven, Pavilin, Prince Quincy. The applicant or their representative here.
You are here, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm here, my name is Marcelo Correa, also, uh, the homeowner, Stacy Scott, is also here.
Okay. Well, what do you want to do?
We can let, uh, Stacy speak.
Okay.
Unmuted, Stacy.
I'm sorry. Um, hi, thank you, um, I think I submitted, um, my request this past, um, February, I don't have it up this night, just to build, um, a room off the side of my house, which are pre-existing three-season porch that, um, in any way is really not useful to us, the bottom of it is kind of rotted, it's never been, um, winterized, and it's kind of a wasted space and finding now here, um, with my four children, we've kind of outgrown the three bedrooms that we have. Um, so I'm requesting to build, um, a bedroom here on the first floor.
Okay. It's a one-story addition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And as you can see too, um, it's not much bigger than what is already existing there.
So you're saying that there's a porch there now?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, there's a porch or deck there now?
Yes, there's a three-season porch already existing.
All right, um, does the board members have any questions?
Not at this time for me.
Okay. John Himmel?
No questions.
Mr. Ray Dell.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what's the, what's the relief?
Well, it's like, it's back, right?
On the side, yeah, but the side's conforming.
Okay.
Jay?
I mean, I'm I'm just wondering.
Mr. Duca? Mr. Duca? Mr. Duca?
He's looking. I'm new.
I got you.
Don't, don't worry about it, I'm, it's not a big deal, I was more just curious, you know?
So, yeah, why are we here, I guess is the question, right, Mr. Ray Dell, it, uh, says, looks like, uh.
There's needed relief for the front setback.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so, it's really a finding, right?
Uh, well, the problem is on the, uh, Andrews roadside. Right now, it it conforms to the front setback of twenty-five feet, uh, by extending it, you're going to reduce it thirteen feet.
Uh, because it's like the side lot, uh, all right, now, now I understand, sorry, Jeff, let me, I get it now. I'm like, I was trying to figure it out, I couldn't figure it out, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
All right, so, uh, to answer that question. Any other question for the board? Does anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Once? Twice? Three times? Do I read any correspondence?
Yep, DPW was consistent with no comments.
Yeah, easy night tonight, I like it. Um. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? It's twice, three times? That part of the hearing over? Um. Charlie, what do you think?
Uh, I'm in favor, no problems, Tracy, one comment, you're beginning to look a lot more like your mother. I'm in favor. No problems. Tracy, one comment. You're beginning to look a lot more like your mother. You look a lot like your mom.
There's somebody, is somebody trying to make a comment, it sounds like?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry I missed the opportunity to do it at the beginning. I'm Tracy's neighbor on Andrews Road. I have no opposition to this, but I needed to have some clarification that the addition wasn't gonna come back towards my property.
No, of course not. It's, won't go any further than where it, the porch is now.
Okay.
The side is now.
All right, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Hemel?
I think it's a nice-looking addition. I think it'll make the house look nicer in form. I, I know it's a couple of feet shy, but I like the project.
Mr. Chin?
I have a question on the parking. Mr. Chairman, I'm just, just, you know, where, Ms. Scott, where do you typically park when you're not in your driveway? Do you park on Andrews or on Haviland?
I park on Haviland usually in front of my house.
How's, how's the traffic pattern over there? Is, I mean, is it difficult to get in and out of your, your site there? Your park, your space?
No, it's, it's, it's been better since they've added the crosswalk and stop signs up in the area over the last fall.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Raydell, have they anything to add?
Yeah, don't let your kids play without jar of peanut butter while you're on a zoning board call.
Okay, that's nice. Good advice to everybody. Mr. Rutherford, I see your hands up. How have I missed you?
I just put up a thump. That wasn't ten.
Okay, bye.
I'm in favor, though.
Uh, my understanding is that there's been a request, that if we approve this, it looks like we're about to, that the contractors have to park on your street. Is that on St. Andrews, is it?
Um, Haviland or Andrews. I am at the corner, so.
Okay, so it's, it's a request that if we approve this, to have the contractors stay on Haviland Street. So Charlie, if you could put that into our motion.
Okay. Jay, that would be you, right? Unmute. Unmute.
Unmute, unmute, unmute.
Yeah, we'll make sure that they park on Haviland and not on Andrews.
Mr. Correa, you got that?
Yes, that's no problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Charlie, want to give us a motion?
Yeah, I'm coming.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one dash twenty, Marcelo Correa for variance to construct a one-story addition on the premises numbered eleven, Haviland Street, I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested variance with the one condition that the contractor be informed that he's only to park his vehicles on Haviland Street.
Anybody?
Second.
Second. The motion seen done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Good luck with that, Ms. Scott. Charlie, could you give us one more motion today?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting? I can do. Stacy, say hello to my dad.
I will, thank you.
Okay.
Are the motion all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.